All right, we are recording to cloud and YouTube will be broadcasting shortly, so.
What's everybody got for time? I got 6:58. Same here. I'll hear David. Brett David Dollinger is Deputy Town Attorney. Just admitted him in. Make him a co-host. Couple more people are joining us. I'm James.
David's a co-host.
I still do not see James.
EV person over the phone.
Couple more people. I can try the person on the phone to see if it's him. Hello? Guest on the telephone, is that James Wentworth? I guess not, guys. All right, I guess we can get started.
Everybody ready?
Right, you're ready?
Yep, sharing my screen now.
Hi Ramsey, here goes.
Hey.
Evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the July 15th meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. Like to begin tonight with some introductions of the board. I am Bill Price, I am the chairman. We have David Fader with us, Laura Civiletti, John Osowski, Jason Babcock Steiner, James Wentworth, and Pam Delaney. These are the members of the Town Planning Board.
James is with us yet.
Okay, well, we'll still have to call the roll. Wanted to introduce everybody on the board. Ramsey Boehner is a town planner and secretary for the planning board. David Dollinger is the Deputy Town Attorney and attorney to the planning board. And giving us technical assistance tonight, assistance tonight is Brett Garlock. He will be managing folks who want to speak as well as presenting the drawings or plans for each of the applications. At this time, Mr. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Member Osowski.
Here.
Babcock Steiner. Babcock Steiner.
Here. Couldn't find him.
Okay. Delaney?
Here.
Civiletti?
Here.
Fader?
Here.
Price?
Here.
Absent is Wentworth.
Okay, thank you. Board members, we do have meeting minutes from our January 15th meeting as well as our February 19th meeting. It's been a while now, but we have a motion, we'll do these one at a time. We have a motion to approve the January 15th meeting minutes.
This is John, I move that we approve the January 15th 2020 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I need to abstain, I wasn't present.
Okay. Ramsey, do you mind doing a vote?
I will. Member Price?
Aye.
Fader?
Aye.
Civiletti?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner? Abstained, sorry. Osowski?
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you. Okay, then we also had the February 19th meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move approval.
Laura?
That's Civiletti?
Yep.
And do we have a second?
This is John, I second it.
Osowski seconds.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Secretary, will you please do a roll vote?
Member Price?
Aye.
Fader?
Aye.
Civiletti?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
Motion passes, minutes are approved.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, we have two public hearings. Also a concept plan review and certain sign applications. Mr. Secretary, were the two public hearings properly advertised?
Yes, they are properly advertised in the Brighton Pittsburgh Post of July 9th, 2020. I do like to make a correction to the agenda. The agenda should read the meeting of July 15th, 2020 and not the meeting of June 17th, 2020. It was a typo. But it was correctly advertised in the Brighton Pittsburgh Post of July 9th, 2020.
Thank you. Okay, we were going to hear those applications now. I just want to, from a procedure standpoint, for everybody that's joining us, if you are a part of the application, please raise your hand and Brett will allow you in. What we will do first is allow the applicant to make a presentation. Once they've made their presentation, the board members will then ask their questions of the applicant. And since this is a public hearing, we will allow members of the audience to raise your hand and you will be allowed in to ask your questions or make your comments. We ask that you kindly state your name and your address. You can be allowed in by looking at the, most of the browsers and platforms that you may be watching on have a function across the bottom of the screen that allows you to raise your hand. So we have at least Brett and Ramsey who are available looking out there for folks who wish to speak on behalf of a certain application. We will give plenty of time because we know not everybody can find some of those buttons right away, so.
Bill, I do have James Wentworth. I want the record to show that James Wentworth has joined the meeting. And Brett, if you could make him a co-host?
Yep.
Okay, welcome, James.
Are you there?
Yes.
James Wentworth left the record is in attendance now.
Okay, thank you. We're going to proceed with our first application of the evening, which is 3P-1-20, application of Winton Place LLC. Owner and Brian Root of Leap and Laugh, who is a lessee for a conditional use permit to allow for a children's indoor entertainment and recreation facility at 3450 Winton Place, which is Winton Place Plaza. Is there anyone representing the applicant? Brett or Ramsey, do you see any?
No, I do not, I was just looking. I don't see any hands raised. Or any familiar names?
Let's see. I'm going to give it about 10 more seconds here and we will, we will move on.
And we can call it at the end of the night one more time, Bill.
Okay. All right, I assume you still don't see anyone?
Nope.
All right. We will move on. Next application is 7P NB1-20. This is the application of Teamsters Local 118 is the owner, DePascuali Construction, as agent for preliminary site plan approval to construct a 2,617 square foot building addition and expand the parking lot on property at 130 Metro Park. Do we have an applicant representative?
I know there's a few people, there's a Joe Jacobs. Joe, are you there?
I am here.
And then there's Mike Moir. Let me get Mike in if Mike wants to participate. Start his video. Mike, are you there? Joe, did you know if Mike wanted to participate?
I have a text here saying that he, that I can present.
Okay.
Most of presenting.
Is that anyone else that you wanted to join you?
I think we're all set.
Okay, Brett has the plan displayed for you, Joe, so we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Jacobs, I'm representing EDR here in Rochester, New York. We're in Village Gate. The, as Ramsey mentioned, or as Mr. Price mentioned, the owner of the parcel and the project is the Teamsters Local 118, local union, the applicant being DePascuali Construction. And the proposed action is the construction of approximately 2,600 square foot building addition at the rear of the existing building located at 130 Metro Park. It's on the north side of Metro Park. And along with that, that building addition, we're providing additional paving, a little additional hardscape for parking. The building addition will be used for intermittent monthly meetings, weekly monthly meetings, and will be also used for interior, there's a, there's a small kitchenette and some bathrooms associated with the interior space. Where we're at right now with the, the site plan application is we are scheduled to be at the architectural review board this month. We were at the conservation board two weeks ago. So we've received comments from the, from the conservation board as well. As part of the site plan application, we will, we are currently looking, we're going to be seeking two variances from the zoning board. One for parking and/or drive aisle setback to the, to, to the property line and also impervious coverage. Currently, the impervious coverage is 72% and required by code is 65%. And aside from those overview, project overview items, some site elements that we're proposing are, if you go to the viewport number two here on the bottom, the proposed building addition has a blank face, blank masonry face on the, on plan bottom, but it's actually the east side of the building. So we're filling that area which would be visible from incoming traffic on Metro Park with some greenery to provide some buffering and break up the, the facade of the building, that addition. And to the rear of the building, or to the rear of the site, there is also, you'll notice a stormwater management facility. This is to conform with the engineering requirements as discussed previously with the Town of Brighton Engineers Office. We essentially have to provide some level of stormwater quantity mitigation. And this, this will provide that, but also we're using it as an opportunity to, you know, put back some of the tree removals and wooded areas that we're going to be clearing. The, you know, as it'll be a sump, it'll be a lower area where water collects, we have some river birches and a black tupelo which are tolerant of periodic inundation. And lastly, the, there's an existing shed on the site, on the project site, we're relocating it to the bottom right, corner plan bottom right, which is northeast corner. It will be partially obscured by existing wooded area from the, from that incoming, from the inbound traffic on Metro Park. And in a nutshell, that's, that's about it.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, can you just tell us a little bit about the, the traffic circulation, the way that it, do they, they enter on one side and circulate to the back and then exit the other side, is that?
Correct, it's a, it's one way in, one way out. So the easternmost entrance or the plan bottom entrance is the ingoing or incoming traffic and the outgoing will be to the plant, yeah, to, on the west side of the building or plan up.
Okay. And tell us about any, so the events in here, these, this isn't a training facility or, or is it? Is it?
There will be training events happening. However, you know, but the most regularly occurring thing will be a monthly meeting for, for the membership essentially.
Okay. And the, is, just how is garbage handled and maybe anything about site lighting that you might, might have proposed?
So as far as exterior mounted site lighting, there's none proposed. There will be per code, obviously building mounted lighting associated with the entrances. There will be, there are photometrics proposed as part of the architectural review board submission and as well. And I believe as part of the site plan application, we gave a, a cut sheet. As we, as we move forward in the progress, in the, in the site plan process, we can kind of overlay and show you the foot candles. So there's not going to be much spillage if any. You know, out past, you know, the, the first row of parking spaces probably and that walkway.
All right, other questions from the board?
Joe, what are you doing for trash?
We are, there is, I believe, an existing dumpster located on the, on, on the premises. That's something that we still have yet to determine, work out. We figured that, you know, we'll get the, we'll advance this plan to, to preliminary stage and, you know, ideally, we'll want to put it close to the actual shed, wherever the shed ends up. You know, using the shed as a, as a buffer.
We're going to want to see the trash dumpster in an enclosure?
Okay.
So think about the enclosure and how the truck will pick up the trash?
Yeah.
Start locating.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be part of, you know, our auto turn analysis.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, you do need to do an auto turn to make sure fire trucks can get through the site? Any generators proposed?
There are no exterior mounted generators, no.
And where would the heating and HVAC be located?
Rooftop.
Rooftop.
There's one transformer, if you noticed, on plan up, roughly the center of the site, right on the eastern property line, but plan up property line. It's a white square in the middle, kind of in the middle of the site at the, yeah, right there. That's really the only exterior, you know, kind of pad mounted.
And that's required by our genie?
Yeah, that's existing.
Okay, that's existing, okay. I have no other questions, Bill.
Okay, other board members?
Joe? I'm wondering the hatch marks on the, in the parking lot, that's just paint?
Correct.
Okay.
This is John, I have a question, is the water supply to this building adequate for fire protection sprinklers?
That is something that we're currently reviewing. The building is not sprinkled currently, so we're looking at what improvements, if any, are needed for, for the, that actual, for, for, for the domestic and fire use. Well, let's say, there's adequate capacity for domestic use. Again, there's only a bathroom and a kitchenette that will be used somewhat infrequently. However, if there is a need for a water service upsize and/or, or a fire, exterior fire, fire service, the plan will be updated for, you know, the site plans will be updated for that.
Thank you very much.
Other board members?
Did we cover light temperature?
No, we have not.
We did not, I think we just would like to let you know, Joe, that we'd like to keep that at or below 3,000 K.
Okay.
Yep. Not sure what you base the, you know, the candle measurements on, but that is something that when you're, when you're working through the, the building mounted lighting to keep in mind.
Well, we'll make sure we're at 2,999 K.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Ramsey and Brett, keep an eye out, is there anyone that cares to address this application? We can.
Not seeing any hands, just give it a couple of more seconds, Bill.
Can't find the button frantically waved and they'll hopefully see you.
Hold on, let me do that.
If there's anybody.
Anyone?
I'm not seeing anyone.
I'm not seeing anyone.
All right. Okay, so that's the, our last, our last public hearing for the night. Joe, I can pretty much guarantee you'll be tabled tonight pending the ARB and variances. So you'll probably get some initial comments from us, from this. Looking for your presentation and working with us on our virtual meeting. As for everybody else, so that is the last public hearing for the night. We have another application for concept review, which we will listen to now. Everybody is welcome to stay and listen to this, but we will not be having any public comment during this meeting. Public comment in the form of letter or email to our secretary Ramsey Boehner will be gladly received. So at this point, like to, does this actually have a number, Ramsey?
Yes, it does, it is on application 7P NB220, application of Baptist Bible Temple, owner and Clover Park Properties LLC, contract BND for concept review to construct a two-story, 100,000 square foot building addition and repurpose an existing church structure for professional office use on a property located at 1075 Clover Street. Give us a few times to let some people in, Jerry Goldman is one of them.
Good evening, everyone.
Jerry.
Who else do you want to join you?
Joining us in the presentation is going to be John August, one of the principals of Clover Park Properties. In addition, Matt Tomlinson from Marathon Engineering will be speaking. And if we desire, Jamie Wick from Hamlin Architects can participate as well. I could probably identify all the participants if you look at your screen. In terms of participants, we're all part of our group in one way or another. I'll introduce them by name, but I don't expect that you have to unmute them.
I have. I'm sorry. Do you want to, I'm sorry, Jerry, let me just get the people that you want to present. We got John, we have you, we have Matt, is there Dave Hamlin?
Jamie from his office is, is here, I didn't see Dave on the list.
I see Dave.
Okay.
Let me find Jamie. Jamie, I think that must.
Maybe he was here until Dave showed up, I don't know.
He's here.
Okay.
Jamie, are you here?
If not, Ramsey, I can speak to the project.
Yeah, just give me, is he just? Comes up.
He's unmuted.
Okay, you're in, thank you. So we have Jamie, John August, Matt, and Jerry, anyone else?
Speaking, likely not, but I'll introduce some of the other people who are on the list in case you look at the list of participants. Other principals of Clover Park Properties are here this evening are David Dorkin and Jeff Sager, as well as Ari August, who is, who is in. Todd Myers, who is a representative on behalf of the Baptist Temple, is also online, I believe, this evening. I think that pretty much covers our group.
Jerry, do you have more than one speaker running?
More than one speaker?
Were in the room with someone?
Are you, yeah, John and I are in the same room, you're getting an echo, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm muted.
Okay, he's, he's muted. Yeah. Why don't I try moving somewhere else? Is this better?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome. Okay. So also got all the logistics out of the way, good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Goldman, I'm the attorney and agent for Clover Park Properties LLC, who is looking to acquire the Baptist Temple property, which is located on the northwest corner of Highland Avenue and Clover Street. The property, the property itself has been utilized by the church historically, but in recent years, they have had a number of tenants in there as well as the main church itself. There's a spiritual wellness center as well as daycare. There have been a number of those types of uses and that only speaks to the issue that we have generally. And that is that religious institutions right now are seeing that their facilities are a little bit more than they can handle. And for that reason, Baptist Temple has looked over the course of the last few years to sell their property. looked over the course of the last few years to sell their property. I believe that Grace Church may have come before the board with a proposal for this site, but there haven't been a whole lot of serious offers which have come into play. The, the Clover Park Properties Group are composed of people who are in the, live in the geographic area and are experienced real estate developers. John August lives directly to the south of this property, David Dorkin is in the neighborhood. They've been familiar with this property and they are looking at this property with the prospect of doing some very good and interesting things, but primarily converting to offices. The conversion to offices in this property, which is located in the RLA district, will require a use variance from the zoning board of appeals. But per the normal procedures of the town of Brighton, we come before the planning board first on concept, because we are proposing a two-story 5,000 square foot footprint addition to the building located on the Highland, Highland Avenue side, you may notice the box, which is in the top right corner, if you will, of the site. And at the same, at the same time, we want to get the board's input before we start into any serious engineering and then come back with a preliminary site plan application. So we're here this evening really to get the board's input relative to, relative to the site and the potential redevelopment of the site. John is going to talk for a few minutes and the owner's perspective on how he, and how they have arrived at this property and, and their plans, and then in terms of the actual site plan itself, Matt Tomlinson is going to lead that discussion.
Jerry, I can't get unmuted.
Okay, I think that the town has to unmute you at this point.
Thank you. Good evening, I, I'm John August. I've lived at 1151 Clover Streets, Jared mentioned, just south of the subject property for about 22 years. Wife and I plan to stay there for probably another 15 to 20 years. As Jerry said, the Baptist Temple, like many congregations, has experienced some financial strain and they came and amended their special use permit a number of years ago to allow them to run some concerts. And due to the need to raise some capital, they've been leasing it out to more and more meeting plate, meeting uses, and it's, it's led to a little more late night traffic, more of a transient group coming in that isn't tied to the neighborhood, and his neighbors, and I speak for a few of the others, were interested in trying to find a quiet use for the future and certainly one that has less transient population than those that are committed and to our neighborhood. We looked early on at this project with the Baptist Temple before it was listed, tried to crunch some numbers on this, could not make the office concept work financially. As Jerry said, they did go under contract with Grace Land Church, I was approached by the church and met with them twice to discuss to do some meetings, but more importantly, large congregation and they were proposing three services every Sunday and needing to expand the parking lot, I think, as the planning board saw with their application. They eventually walked away, felt the process was going to be too hard or too expensive for them, then I reconnected with the Baptist Temple. We were able to re-crunch the numbers and through the addition that we're proposing, got the numbers to work, so there was at least a viable return for the future. We think that the office use is good for the neighborhood, it's a quiet daytime nine to five type use, very little traffic in the evenings and weekends. We think we're retaining in this development, the parkland element, it's been really known for this part of the Brighton area and certainly for our neighborhood with the sidewalks that surround it, many people walk and utilize the property. Of course, the office use would put this property back onto the tax rolls for Brighton, and for all those reasons, we think that's a good use that would serve the neighborhood well and serve the town well for the next, see, future 20, 30, 40 years. I think that's all I really wanted to say, just wanted to introduce myself to the board, I am a neighbor and have had a good relationship with the Baptist Temple, we're hoping we can continue to develop the property and have it be an asset for the neighborhood.
Thank you, John. Larry, any other comments, you want to let Matt, Matt speak?
Let's let Matt speak now. There we go, great. Had to wait for Ramsey to unmute me again there.
Thank you, it's Brett.
Yep, no problem, Matt Tomlinson from Marathon Engineering, I just wanted to walk through the site plan briefly from a concept perspective. We have had a pre-application meeting with town staff and got some initial comments from the town engineer, as well as Ramsey on some things that we'll need to consider as we move this project forward, and that's a big part of the reason why we're appearing before you folks tonight is to get your input as well, so that we can keep this project moving forward in a manner that addresses as many comments as we can upfront, so I know John mentioned the park-like setting, I just wanted to talk through a little bit, kind of going north to south. The intention for the exterior of the property fronting to Clover Street and Highland Avenue is essentially to leave the property as it exists alone. We are proposing to add some parking along the front northern portion of the Clover Street access, all the access points are proposed to remain as existing. We do want to provide a visitor arrival point, if you will, oriented towards the street, but the intention really is to maximize the amount and functionality of parking to the rear of the building, leaving all of the existing trees and the view, for the most part, to into the property and park-like setting that John mentioned alone, there's some beautiful oaks out on this property and, and quite a bit of lawn area that really creates a nice setting for this building. As you go to the rear of the site, one of the things that was requested that we will provide as we move forward is kind of an overlay of the existing versus the proposed to give you folks on the board a little better understanding of where the existing asphalt is and how much impervious we're increasing, decreasing in the various areas, but essentially, for the most part, the amount of impervious is relatively the same as what is existing today, we are proposing to increase the number of parking in order to demonstrate compliance with the zoning code at four spaces per thousand roughly, one of the steps that we're also going through right now is just verifying the interior square footages of the building, it's on the tax rolls at approximately 28,000 square feet. There's some balconies and some other space that we're working through how those will be incorporated and utilized and or removed or added to, so we will nail that down by the time we come back in for you folks, so we have an accurate number of spaces required. The intention would be to bank a number of spaces. This is not intended to be a high-density office use, but more of a corporate office center. So there'll be room for visitors, but not, not cubicles stacked on top of each other, the building really doesn't layout real well for that type of a user, user. So we do anticipate that this will be a much lower vehicle-oriented office building than, than some others you may be familiar with. From a site plan standpoint, some of the things that we're going to be looking at and presenting to you folks is a traffic analysis, a trip gen analysis, as well as some a good look at the intersection at Clover and Highland to determine if there's any impact there, we'll include some correspondence with the county DOT at that time, we will be looking into some landscaping. Currently, we're proposing to remove approximately eight trees primarily within the parking field at the rear of the building, again, the intention is to leave everything out towards the streets and the fronts of the building exactly the way that it is today, there are several pine trees, some smaller decorative trees that we'll need to remove for the parking layout and functionality, but we are proposing to at least plant the same amount, if not a little bit more than what we remove within some of the islands that we're creating within the parking lot. We will be taking a good look at stormwater, again, that, that ties back to the slight increase in impervious that we're anticipating. One of the reasons, let alone the look and some of the screening of the parking, that we've selected that front portion for the addition out towards Highland Avenue is we feel that that gives us an opportunity to maximize the treatment of roof runoff and some of the entrance drive runoff by creating some green infrastructure practices to accommodate those outdoors Highland Avenue. Right now, the site generally slopes down to the southeast corner, and in large rain events, there's a large puddle that forms a large puddle that forms down near John August in the south entrance driveway. And so we think that we can help alleviate some of that situation, number one, and number two, provide some stormwater quality out here where it doesn't exist today. One of the other things that we know we will need to take a look at is the lighting. There is proposed to be some lighting on the building to make it a little bit more attractive, and Dave's going to speak a little bit to some of the windows and other elements that are going to be incorporated into the facade, as John mentioned, this is not intended to be in, you know, evening office hours, weekends, that kind of thing, so lighting, we feel can be reduced or placed on timers for times when the office park will be empty. We will, of course, have enough lighting for egress, building code, security, that kind of thing, but the intention is not to have this thing lit up all hours of the night. As far as utilities go, there is sanitary service to the building, we understand that we'll need to do some investigation on that and potentially make any improvements that are necessary to make sure that the building is adequately serviced, the town engineer did ask us to take a look into a potential capacity issue along Highland Ave, so one of the things that we'll provide is a comparison to the peak use for the existing usage of the building and we'll work through that with them. We do anticipate having to sprinkler the building addition, and then we'll work with the fire marshal as far as sprinkling the remainder of the existing building, which is not currently sprinkled, there is a water main and a hydrant immediately on our side, the west side of Clover Street, so there's available service right proximate to the project. We do anticipate that there may be a couple of variances driven by the comparison of this use to the residential code. That's something that we'll work with Mr. DiStefano and Ramsey on relative to that. One of the things that comes to mind that was raised in our pre-application meeting was a potential for rear yard lot coverage being greater than 30%. I do think that on this four-point acre, 4.8 acre site, especially with approximately two acres within the front yard where we're really not proposing any improvements, there is a significant amount of green space, and that's definitely our intention to maintain that, so if that drives a necessary variance for lot coverage in the rear yard, I think that's balanced very well by, by the intent of leaving the trees in the, in the open space in the front yards. So with that, I'll turn it over to David to speak to the building, and then we can answer questions as, as the board may have. Okay, I'm going to jump in for a minute and gonna have to move again unless we, unless we shut this off. Should I shut this one down or what? Okay. Okay, we've gotten rid of our feedback here. And we appreciate your attention. Our, our plan now is to turn it over to Dave Hamlin in a minute to talk about architecture, but just wanted to take a minute and, and talk a little bit about the plan and the concept, and the idea of leaving the corner open is something that I think is something that's very desirable for the neighborhood and should be for the town, this is a wonderful gateway. And our proposed green space on our concept plan is in excess of 50%, which is well, well more than the 35% minimum, which is required under code. I think Dave's discussion is going to focus on the addition, which is being proposed, how it integrates with this property. One of the nice things about it is that it does screen some of the parking areas as well from, from public view on Highland Avenue. So with that, like to turn it over to Dave Hamlin, I'll come back at the end and talk a little bit about process.
Thanks, Jerry. I believe the first image you'll see, there's two images we have. One is a shot of.
You got to unmute Dave.
Can people hear me?
I can hear you, Dave.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this image is of the the Clover side of the building, and it, it's, the point of this image is just to show, it's just a very rough sketch to show that we're adding some windows on that side. As it's converted to office use, we need a little bit more natural daylight into those spaces. That's the sanctuary area, the existing sanctuary area on the left. And so we're introducing some windows compatible with the glazing pattern that's there now. We're going to keep, you know, a lot of the fenestration that's there now, so the character of the building, you know, is remaining largely untouched as it faces Highland and Clover. And then these windows that we're adding are just for functionality, as we're filling the space with, with office occupancy to get more natural daylight into them. And then the next image is of the side that faces Highland. And this shows the addition on the right, the existing building on the left. And in between the two peaked roofs there, you see that's the middle, that's where the existing mechanical areas are. And there are some concrete panels in between the two, so what we're doing here is just trying to blend the new addition with the existing building, having some pitched roof lines so that you get kind of a continuity of the roofs as you move across the site. And then using the materials of the existing building in a complimentary way, I'm not sure it'll exactly match the brick, but it'll be brick will be the primary exterior material, and then we'll have some, you know, glazing elements that work with the existing glazing patterns of the existing building. And we break up the facade a bit too, you know, pulling in and out along that side. So that it's, you know, less box-like and has more of a scale like the, the existing building. And as Jerry mentioned, you know, this, you're not seeing the office entry facing Highland, it's on the other side, interior to the parking lot, so a lot of the you know, the activity of, of people coming and going inside, in and out of the building will be shielded from the street. You know, like we've been saying, contributing to the park-like atmosphere, and so the glazing you see is really for the functionality of the interior office occupancy. So that's it, trying to, you know, do something that's respectful of the existing building, using the same kind of materials, similar roof shapes and in and out of planes of the building to break up the scale and make it compatible with what's there today.
Thank you, David. Jerry, were you going to wrap up on process?
Yes, I am, we are we are engaging with the neighbors, as soon as we're completed with this meeting this evening, John has already started to reach out with neighbors and will be scheduling meetings to talk to them about the proposal, John, as he indicated is familiar with, with a lot of the neighbors already. Our, our steps going forward will have us making the application for preliminary site plan approval. Also, we'll be going to the zoning board for variances, and as Matt indicated, we need to figure out as it, as it relates to variances, exactly which ones we need as a result of us being in residential A zoning, which is a little different than would be traditional for, for office. Obviously, the use variance and the area variances will be critical in terms of dealing with the development of the project, we will be engaging back with the planning board as well as with the architectural review board on design and, and signage, which probably also will need some variances as a result of our being located in a residential district, so.
Uh, which probably also will need some variances as a result of our being located in a residential district. So what we're looking for tonight is as much input as we can get on an initial concept level from the planning board so that we can move forward with more detailed site plans and engage uh and engage with neighborhood. Uh, with that, we'll commute me again and we'll be here taking notes.
All right. Thank you. Um, uh, as John and Matt, Dave uh know, we we like to go around and give each board member a a chance to either ask questions or state their thoughts, uh, observations of the uh of the proposed application. Uh, so I think we will, we will do that. Let me just start with uh Ramsey. Ramsey, do you have any questions that you have of uh of any of the applicant's consultant team?
As I had said earlier, we did um do a Zoom meeting with them yesterday. Went through a bunch of uh staff comments uh and town engineering comments. Um, we went through the conservation board comments, which the planning board has. Um, some of it has to do with just trying to get the numbers right to figure out if we have adequate parking. One of the things is making sure that they have met with the neighbors. Uh, the conservation board was a little bit concerned about the buffering of the parking lot, especially to the houses on Council Rock. Um, it's something that we feel needs to be addressed. What's there may be adequate. Um, we need more information on that. Um, there was some discussion about the necessity of the parking spots that they're proposing up front off of Clover. Um, and we were just also asking for them to give us a little bit more uh comparison to what's there now, to what's being proposed and having some comparing statistics showing how it relates to the residential district and a little bit to maybe the office district where you normally would find a use like this. The other thing is that the project is for professional office. It's, it does not allow medical. Um, and that is something that they're going to have to deal with because that's a different traffic pattern and a lot more parking. So we wanted to stress that as the future goes, we would hate to see this go to medical and then that whole campus light up front is gone and becomes a field of of parking. Wanted to see more landscaping throughout the parking lot. Um, any disturbance to the front yard area should be minimized. Uh, the conservation board did not have any major concerns regarding the repurposing of these existing church building for professional offices. And that they felt that the two-story addition does not appear too big and that it maintains a hundred and five-foot setback from Highland Ave.
All right. Right. Very good. Um, I'm going to just kind of call on each of the board members uh individually to make some comments. Uh, like David Fader, can, do you have some comments or questions?
Um. Uh, I don't have a real problem with it, but I did kind of like the uh idea by the conservation board that since we're doing this and they are thinking about adding more uh pavement, that it be impervious uh pervious uh pavement or parking. I think that would help. Um, but until I hear a major concern from the neighbors, I okay with it.
Thank you. Laura?
Um, I think I'm okay with the proposal generally. Um, I would like to see, I think what Matt had mentioned. Um, understanding what the limits of the existing pavement is versus what's proposed. Um, if there's any significant tree removals, um, having that delineated. I think that's really all I had.
Thank you. John Osowski?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Um, one, I'm I'm curious to know how close this uh existing location is to a to a bus line. I'm just not sure if a bus runs down Highland Avenue uh for easy discharge to or for someone would need to take a bus from East Avenue. And it's not not a very long walk from East Avenue over to this location. So I'm just curious to know that if they could investigate that and let us know. Cause that that could help on the parking situation if people took the bus to this location. And I do like that the the addition is sympathetic to the existing architecture. So it seems to uh to blend in well with the with the site and with the existing building. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Jason?
Yeah, I I generally uh agree with what everybody said. I think I don't have a problem with it. Um, you know, I think Ramsey brought up some good points that they're gonna be discussing. Um, you know, I guess just making sure that it is adequately screened from the neighbors. I I too like that the design is, you know, kind of in context with what's there. So. Most of.
Thank you. James?
I'm generally in favor of this. I think it's um a reasonable use and respectful use of the site. Um, got a number of little questions that has has been mentioned. Uh, not seeing existing in comparison with what's proposed. It's hard to get a sense of uh the changes to the site. Uh, I agree with Ramsey's concern about uh buffering between parking uh to the west and to Council Rock properties. Um, I'm not sure if that parking area is existing um up to that point, but that's providing uh very little buffering or space for buffering uh the way it's laid out. Uh, I'm also concerned about that parking area to the south uh with the banked parking spaces. It is a cul-de-sac and there are use issues with that. Um, but I'm also concerned about uh snow removal and how you would intend to stage that. Uh, I would see it plowing east and then it's overflowing into the entry drive. So that's a concern. I'm also a little unsure of how the building use uh lays out in terms of the relationship to the parking. I I understand that the curved parking fronting Clover is visitor. Um, so I'm guessing that's a main entrance, but uh, I'm unsure whether there are entrances into the two-story building from the parking. Um, all that's related to my usual concerns about ADA parking and distribution. Um, I'm also concerned about the number of spots and the relationship to what's needed. Um, what's there, what you're adding, um, and what's needed. I like John's point about bus uh use, um, because that could help mitigate need. Uh, I believe that's all.
Okay, thanks, James. Pam?
Um, generally, I I like this design. I think I, I think I mentioned last time this property came up that this was my grandparents' church. So I've been going um to this church since I was born. I always thought it was a really cool building and uh as their congregation began to at the time, I was hoping that somebody would come and do something with this property because I think it's really interesting. Um, I think this is a great design. I I don't love the parking on the front loop um and the visibility from Highland, but um, I don't, I don't need it. I just really like the green space out front. So I don't know if there's any alternatives for that, but um, I think the addition looks great. I love how it fits in with the current building and overall, I I think this is a nice design. I think it's a good reuse of a of a cool Brighton building.
Thanks, Pam. That leaves me. Um, I guess just a couple of thoughts for um for Matt. Um, I I believe that parking closer to the west property line is existing. I I think um, that it is, I know that it's there and I'm not sure who's who owns the fence that's along that uh that line. That that may need a little bit of work. Uh, not, again, not sure who owns it or controls that fence. Um, the mature trees on site are all quite nice and make a quite elegant uh site. I think if uh got an arborist out there during the process, just to do a uh kind of a walkabout and talk to the condition of the trees, uh, it would be good to know. Um, not only just the ones that are coming down, but the ones that are going to remain, what kind of lifespan they've they've got left. Um, I think that the access points are fine. I personally don't have a a big problem with the front drop-off and parking. Maybe we can reduce the number of spaces that are out there. Um, but I I I don't mind there being an identifiable front entrance or main entrance for visitors and not having them uh wander around the site looking where to where to go in. Um, I would encourage you to look at uh making stronger, I think they're there, but uh at least graphically stronger uh pedestrian connections out to Highland and to Clover. Um, I'd like to encourage as much alternative use uh for uh buses, for transit, uh pedestrian, you know, for walking, which John will do, but also for biking uh to the property. A little less dependence on uh on single, single vehicles. Um, one que, the building looks great. Um, one question for David Hamlin is does this building actually have architectural significance, historic significance at all?
You know, I don't, it's not listed. Um, I don't believe it's listed. Uh, and it, you know, it has a distinct style uh and character. So I think you could say, you know, it's relatively significant, significant, especially as uh being on that corner for fifty years or so or sixty. Um, so I think that's why we want to respect it and just uh make it complimentary to what's there.
No, it's a, it's a, it is very much a compliment and even the even the improvements that you're making to the existing building appear very compatible and uh inconsistent with the building. Matt, just kind of keep in mind, you know, all of our other concerns and uh stormwater management and site lighting and making sure the dumpster can be accessed and all that kind of stuff. So um, those are our, those are our comments. I hope they're helpful. We all appear to be very positive and would encourage you to uh uh proceed to the next step in this application process. Um, we we are not taking any public comment, but if there's any members who have been of the pop, of the public who have been listening to this and do have comments, please uh please contact Ramsey Boehner at the Town of Brighton with your written comments on this. There will be several other uh public meetings for this project as they submit for preliminary and final applications where we will have uh the time for people to speak on the on the project. Um, uh, Jerry, how are we doing? We good to? You have any final comments?
Yeah, I I just, just to wrap up and and I neglected to mention, I'm glad that Ramsey did about the uh staff workshop we had yesterday. Um, I walked away and typed my notes and wound up with eighteen items. So uh, it looks like a typical review from the town and and it's thorough way of dealing with things. And we're prepared to address all of them um going forward. And a lot of them uh were stated by the board members as well. Um, we do appreciate your uh attention, your thought on this, uh, your comments. Um, especially the favorable ones. It's always nice. And uh, and we plan to be back uh probably within within a couple of months uh to uh to move this process forward.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good luck to the team.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your guys' effort.
All right. Um, why, at this point, uh, we're going to go back and discuss the two applications. And then go into the sign applications. Everybody is welcome to stay and listen to us deliberate. But you are also welcome to uh to leave the meeting if you wish and contact Ramsey tomorrow morning for any details of our uh resolutions. Um, so that brings us back to our first application, which was uh three P O one twenty, the application of Witten Place LLC. We did not have a uh anybody representing the application. Uh, at this point, Ramsey, what is our, what are our options? Ramsey, you're muted. You're muted, Ramsey.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I apologize. Um, I was trying to keep it, I was looking at the uh participants list to see if there was anyone that has joined us. No one has joined us, Bill. When we do go into decisions, it would be my recommendation that the application be denied without prejudice. They can come back, make another application. Um, we've been trying to get a hold of them for months. I'm not sure what happened.
Okay. All right, well, I I believe we're we're at a point to um make a motion on this application. Uh, does anyone care to um make the motion for denying without prejudice?
Do we need to close the public hearing or will that do it?
I I think that does all of it. I, but I'm not sure.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to deny without prejudice.
I'll second. Um, is there any, any further conversation? Questions? Ramsey, we please do a roll vote.
And this is also to close the public hearing, if I could add that in.
Yes, please.
Just give me one second. Member Wentworth?
Aye.
Hey, um, Price?
Aye.
Fader?
Aye.
Civiletti?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. The application is denied without prejudice.
Good, thank you. Uh, next application is uh seven P N B one twenty. This is the application of Teamsters Local one eighteen for a property at one thirty Metro Park. Um, I believe there are substantial uh outstanding ARB and uh ZBA issues. Kind of get a motion to table the application.
I move the board tables application seven P N B one twenty based on the testimony given and plan submitted. The thirty-three items of additional information outlined in the planning board are requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
I'll second.
Uh, that was Laura.
Yeah. Civiletti?
Yes.
Application seven P N B one twenty has been uh moved to table and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, please roll call.
Wentworth?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Fader?
Aye.
Civiletti?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
Application is tabled. Public hearing is kept open.
Thank you. Um, does the record, the record will reflect our comments in addition to the town staff meeting on uh the John, John August uh application?
Yep, the record will show that you have reviewed it and offered comments.
Very good. All right, do we have uh signs to review?
Yes, we do. We have three signs. We can give Brad a a second to get um to the signs. The sign, the first sign is sign fifteen three. The sign, the first sign is sign 153. Rochester Regional Health is proposed. Brett, if you could show what's existing?
Oh, okay.
We got all necessary variances. The Architecture Review Board approved it as presented, so I would recommend that this board approve it as recommended by the ARB.
Okay, so moved, is there a second?
Aye.
Was that Babcock Steiner?
That is correct.
All right. Moved and seconded as recommended by ARB.
Wentworth?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Fader? Fader? Can we use Fader?
Aye.
Civiletti?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
Approved as recommended. Next sign is 1584. This is what is proposed. And this is what's existing. Architecture Review Board recommended be approved as presented?
Well, it's better than the existing.
A little.
I'm trying to be positive.
You are, you're doing very well. Okay, I move approval consistent with the recommendation of the ARB. Is there a second?
Second.
We're a seconded. Any discussion? Okay, Ramsey?
Member Osowski?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Civiletti?
Aye.
Fader?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Wentworth?
Aye.
Next sign is 1585. This is a Witten Place Plaza.
Attending?
And these, the, these photos are just showing the other signs in the plaza.
Okay.
I believe that the Architecture Review Board also recommended approval as presented. So I would recommend, if you're in agreement, approval as recommended by the ARB.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
I got Delaney on that, did I hear Delaney?
Give it to-
Delaney.
Tie goes to Delaney.
Ready for a roll?
Ready.
Wentworth?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Fader?
Aye.
Civiletti?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
I think that's everything.
Okay. Thank you. I believe that concludes our meeting for July 15th. Any other business at all, Ramsey?
Um, we have none. I'd like to thank everyone, I'd like to thank Brett, a nice job.
Well done, Brett.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.
Brett, I'll see you in the morning, everyone, see you next month.
Have a good evening, folks.
Everyone.
He's cool, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you so much, you guys are the best.